Good evening. The February sixteenth, twenty twenty one, virtual legislative meeting of the Anorado County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Linda Schewitt, Madam Legislative Council.
Present.
Madam Auditor, Susan Smith.
Present.
Madam Chair, everyone is present.
Wonderful. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Pickard will lead both.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We pray to administer that which is just in all policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in Annapolis at the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-nineteen emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the various executive orders issued by the governor and the county executive that limit public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed with the clerk and considered by the council, and allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it is not necessary it's not necessary to suspend the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the public or media or the location of council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at four ten two 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 four four one three.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, have we received from members of the public any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of written or typed testimony for this portion of the meeting.
Madam Secretary, my script says otherwise.
It says that we did not receive any submissions, but we do have a member registered to speak, I believe, another of the public.
Okay, apparently I can't read. I'll try again. We have one individual signed up to speak on matters not listed on our agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When I call on you, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. We have Stephen Wadi.
Hello. My name is Stephen Wadi. I live at seven nine six eight Heather Miss Drive. I'm here on behalf of myself and myself alone. Our democracy isn't a bad place. Local and local, state, and federal governments are all facing major decisions on how to address the coronavirus pandemic and its intended economic fallout. There's an overwhelming desire in many of us to take a deep sigh of relief and move on from the last four years. However, we have yet to come to a place where we can truly move on. Why? Because the foundations of the white supremacist backlash that created Donald Trump are still ever present in our society. Many of the suburban, single-family home communities in Anorado County itself are a vision created by segregationists and often unwittingly maintained through institutionalized racism that is embedded in every institution in this county. The pandemic has deepened our inequities. Amazon has moved to take over many warehouses in the Baltimore-Washington area, especially around BWI. Black people are overrepresented in warehousing positions. These jobs cannot be done remotely. Black people overrepresented restaurant positions, and these jobs cannot be done remotely. We need to make sure we take care of these workers in this budget session and provide them with the opportunity to travel at low in low-cost and cheap public transportation so that they can not put all of their wages into transporting themselves from Baltimore City or Annapolis to the BWI airport. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wadi. Invitation to audience is now closed. Does any council member have an item to place on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February first, twenty twenty one.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Sarah Lacy at six PM. Ms. Lacy gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February first, twenty twenty one?
So moves, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of February first, twenty twenty one stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number sixteen twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Exempt Service Police Department. Bill number seventeen twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service, Child Classifications, Position Control, Fire Department. Bill number eighteen twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Budget, Departmental Personnel Sumories, Reclassification of Positions. Bill number nineteen twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Crimes, Civil Offenses and Fines, Crimes, Littering. Bill number twenty twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Flood Plane Management, Erosion and Sediment Control and Stormwater Management, Subdivision and Development, Forest Conservation. Bill number twenty one twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Landscaping and Tree Contracting with Accessory Recycling of Logs into Firewood.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number sixteen twenty one, Resolution Approving the Use of Clifton Larson Allen LLP, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolution number sixteen twenty one this evening?
Motion to suspend the rules, Allison Pickard.
Councilwoman Radvian, second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
That's seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. A motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolution number sixteen twenty one is adopted.
Thank you. We will consider resolution number sixteen twenty one after we get through the bills, because of course you have to pay your bills first, you know. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number five twenty one.
Bill number five twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfer of Funds.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, would you like to tell us about the bill?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the virtual table is Mr. Teru from Budget. We also have Mr. Stansky from AACPS and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. We discussed the bill at the work session as a reminder. This is the Board of Education Transfer Bill. There is no new county money required, and it looks like we've got Mr. Shaknovich who joined us as well. And in the final reminder I will give is AACPS has their Board of Education meeting tonight, so appreciate the team from AACPS's flexibility in being in two places at once tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shaknovich if he has anything he wants to say, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I believe we covered most of the matter at the workshop. Again, this is Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. Joined this evening by Mr. Matthew Stansky, our Director of Financial Operations. It does, as the Madam Auditor's letter indicates, and as we covered at our last meeting, essentially take approximately seven point four million dollars of additional revenue and appropriations, and then places them within the appropriate state categories. Most of this funding is of the restricted or grant nature and therefore not discretionary. There is no change in terms of county revenue or county government contribution towards this bill. And with that, we'll conclude remarks and turn it back over to you for any questions.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the Ethics Protocol, I wanted to disclose that my wife works for the school system. There is an administrative transfer. And again, that was sent in and approved by the Ethics Board. I just want to put that on the public record. Thank you.
Ms. Rockin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also for the record, I am a part-time employee for AACPS, but I believe I will not be impacted by this transfer.
Okay, do any of my colleagues have any questions for the administration or for AACPS? Doesn't look like there are any. I don't hear anybody calling my name. Okay, we will now open the public hearing on bill number five twenty one. Madam Secretary, have we received any written testimony from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of written or typed testimony for bill number five twenty one.
Thank you. And we do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. Therefore, the public hearing on bill number five twenty one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number five twenty one.
Bill number five twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfer of Funds.
Is there any further discussion? None on none? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number five twenty one.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number five twenty one is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number six twenty one.
Bill number six twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Milburn Special Community Benefit District, Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Mr. Barron, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me is our Budget Officer, Mr. Trumbauer. Ms. McQuade from the Office of Finance, our Finance Director, and from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Bill six twenty one is for the purpose of levying the special community benefit assessment to repay a loan in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars made by Sandy Spring Bank to Milburn Club Incorporated. Milburn is seeking the loan to fund the reconstruction of a community bulkhead and pier, which is a use that complies with their statutory leave permitted purpose. The term of the loan is five years. Milburn SCBD has included the first payment in the proposed FY twenty-two budget request contingent on the council's approval. Any cost that the county will incur in administering the multi-year payment of the loan will be offset by the administrative fee. With that, we ask you to move the bill.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not a question, just echoing Mr. Barron's statement. And I had a chance to talk with Mr. Trumbauer about this too, so I appreciate the Administration moving this forward. I've talked with the community members. I know that they're intent and eager to move forward with this. It'll be a very good thing for the community. I believe there are some members from the community who may be here this evening. If not, I'm sure they're watching. So I would just ask for your support. Thanks very much.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on bill number six twenty one. My dog is not signed up. Secretary, have we received any written testimony from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of written or typed testimony for bill number six twenty one.
Thank you. We will now hear from any members of the public who signed up ahead of time to speak on this bill. We have one individual signed up. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When I call on you, please unmute yourself, mute your dog, and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Edward Flynn.
Good evening, everyone. Edward Flynn, ninety-five, Milburn, Pasadena, Maryland. Just open any questions you guys may have. Nathan, thank you. He did state pretty much the entire the entire loan will be used for the bulkhead replacement in the community. We secured the five-year loan. We'll be paying the loan in installments. And the installment amount we will be securing through the SCBD budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn. The public hearing on bill number six twenty one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number six twenty one.
Bill number six twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Milburn Special Community Benefit District, Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number six twenty one.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number six twenty one is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number seven twenty one.
Bill number seven twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Housing for the Elderly of Moderate Needs, Live-In Caretakers.
Ms. Pickard is the sponsor and Mr. Pruski a co-sponsor, so Ms. Pickard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill harkens back to some legislation we passed last spring. We know that we needed to do a cleanup bill, and this is it. We want to make sure that we are within our fair housing authorization for those living in age-restricted sixty-two and over communities can have a caregiver if they so need one that may or may not be sixty-two years of age. So it's a pretty simple bill. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you again. I want to thank my colleague certainly for this bill. As many of you know, we're certainly trying to expand our options. And this is a bill that certainly allows that, so I want to thank my colleague for taking the lead. Happy to be a co-sponsor and appreciate. I hope that the council will support this with a seven of a vote. Thank you.
Would the Administration like to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. The Administration supports this legislation. I want to thank the sponsors and the council's attorney for working with the Administration to craft this important bill. Seven twenty one will change the county code, as was stated, to allow live-in caretakers who may be under the age of sixty-two to help care for the elderly resident. I do want to point out that this is this is one of the most cost-effective ways that folks do seek and get care, live-in caretakers. And we have, I failed to introduce them, and I apologize. We have Ms. Joelle Ridgway from our Department of Aging, who has done extensive research on the cost savings that individuals can find by having a live-in caretaker. We also have Ms. Lynn Miller from OPZ and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Sorry, folks, did not mean to short your introduction. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. And Joelle, if you have anything to add, please feel free. We support the bill.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm not sure who on the panel is the correct person to ask this question to, but I just want to confirm. One of the obvious concerns about having younger people living in age-restricted housing is impacts on schools. I just want to ensure that the caregiver, is that someone who has to be over the age of eighteen? I didn't see that in the bill or in the legislative summary. So I'm not sure if that's something that's understood in the code or if that's required somewhere else or not. But I just want to make sure that we're not impacting school capacity with this if for some reason the caregiver now qualifies as being a child or somebody who's seventeen, something like that.
That might be best handled, Pete Barron with the Administration, that might be best handled by somebody at OPZ or Law.
Hi, I'm Lynn Miller with Planning and Zoning. To my knowledge, there is not, there is nothing in the code that would put a minimum restriction on the age of a live-in caregiver.
Do any other colleagues have questions or comments? Ms. Schewitt.
I just wanted to add that it's highly unlikely that a person who is a caregiver to a person who can't perform the ordinary things that you do in life, like eating and taking a shower and bathing and cooking and all that kind of stuff, it's very unlikely that that person's going to be also in school. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Pickard.
There is provisions in this bill that the person coming into the age-restricted community has to there has to be some confirmation that they are actually a caregiver. So as Ms. Schewitt said, it's unlikely they would be a high school student. But it is an appropriate and needed way for folks to age in place in our more moderately priced senior housing.
This is Joelle Ridgway from Aging. Good evening, everybody. I just would add that the the groups that fund these kind of caregiver support programs do have criteria for what the requirement of caretakers often. So I would imagine we would find those there. It's not been our experience either that we find very young people in that role.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on bill number seven twenty one. Madam Secretary, have we received any written testimony from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one submission of written or typed testimony for bill number seven twenty one. The entire council received a copy and it has been added to the bill file.
Thank you. We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. Therefore, the public hearing on bill number seven twenty one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number seven twenty one.
Excuse me. Bill number seven twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Housing for the Elderly of Moderate Needs, Live-In Caretakers.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number seven twenty one.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number seven twenty one is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eight twenty one.
Bill number eight twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Permits, Residential Peers, and Riparian Rights.
Ms. Fiedler is the sponsor of this bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As discussed during our work session, this bill came about from a circumstance in the Fifth District where there was funding from the state and local governments to support a shoreline restoration project. The project was on the verge of starting construction when a private peer began construction just prior. There was an attempt to halt the construction, but there was no mechanism within inspections and permits to issue a stopper order. This bill would give that tool by calling into question riparian rights and allow the two entities to address that privately. And I know my colleague, our colleague here, has an amendment that will come at the appropriate time.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Barron, would the Administration like to respond?
Sure, Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me is our Environmental Policy Director, Matt Johnston, from Office of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Krenitz, and Mr. Kai Ziegler from IMP, Mr. Africa, and Mr. Hassan, and from Law, Mr. Swain. I want to thank the sponsor for communicating with the Administration on this bill. We were well aware of the unfortunate situation that happened in her district. We support this bill and the amendment that I believe is forthcoming. So the experts here on the screen are happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have to clarify. I have two bills back-to-back, and I will be introducing the amendment on this bill.
That's what I thought.
Okay, it looks like we have no questions or comments at this time, so we will open the public hearing on bill number eight twenty one. Madam Secretary, have we received any written testimony from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one submission of written or typed testimony for bill number eight twenty one. The entire council received a copy and it has been added to the bill file.
Okay. We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. The public hearing on bill number eight twenty one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eight twenty one.
Bill number eight twenty one, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Permits, Residential Peers, and Riparian Rights.
Is there any further discussion? At this time, I think amendments are in order. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment- Amendment number one. This amendment requires that an applicant notify a homeowners association when an application to construct a residential peer is filed, or alternatively, alternatively, yes, any abutting property owners if no contact information for the homeowners association is available.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Councilman Pruski?
Is there a second?
Fiedler, a second.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I want to thank, um, the key Sinclair community and Ms. Dawn Myers for submitting her testimony. Um, an ongoing discussion that was had between OPZ and myself in the Office of Law, it was trying to craft an amendment that would be proactive, because not every, um, community association or private um, property owner has the finances to go the route that, that this community had in this particular circumstances. And recognizing that there's a variety of circumstances where this could happen in the future, this creates a notification mechanism prior to, um, the application process beginning and just would allow riparian rights to be addressed, uh, in a more proactive measure.
Would the administration like to respond?
Pete Barron with the administration, we support the amendment.
Okay, any questions or comments? From anyone? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one to bill number eight twenty-one is adopted.
Okay, bill number eight twenty-one, as amended, will be heard on March first, twenty twenty-one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number nine twenty-one.
Bill number nine twenty-one, an ordinance concerning civil emergencies duration.
Ms. Fiedler is the sponsor of this bill? You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, as discussed in our work session, this bill is really a reflection of the past eleven months and looking forward, um, for not only this council but future councils, understanding that under a state of emergency, the governor must renew the state of emergency every thirty days. And also understanding, looking back at the historic on the civil emergency section of our code, and the intent is very clear that, um, civil emergencies were supposed to be for a brief period of time and not in perpetuity. Um, so it, it really kind of aligns the county's, um, code with what the state does in extraordinary circumstances um, and limit a civil emergency from going beyond forty-five days without, uh, any county executive coming back and starting the civil emergency process all over again.
Thank you, Mr. Barron.
Uh, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is our county attorney, Mr. Greg Swain. Um, we stated our, uh, position at the work session, that hasn't changed. I'll remind the council that, uh, you have the power to end a civil emergency at any time if you wish.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is Allison Pickard, D-two. We've, we've had a lot of conversations about, um, emergency ordi- ordinances in the code, in the charter, civil emergency and emergency powers with the county executive. As, um, you heard from the administration, this council has, currently has the power within the code to extend a civil emergency for any number of days that it chooses. Um, we also have the power to end a civil emergency if we feel the need. One thing I'm, I'm a little concerned of is, you know, this isn't aligning the, the county code with the governor's powers, because the governor just renews his, the state of emergency every thirty days of his own volition. He doesn't go to the legislature to, to get that approved. He just does it. So there are differences between the governor's powers and the county executive powers. So my, what I'd like to propose, and I, I, I hinted it at the work session, is that this council is embarking on appointing a seven-member charter review commission starting in May. I think it would really be advantageous for us as a body to request, once we've appointed that commission, to also request via resolution that that commission take up, um, all the different emergency issues we have, both in the charter and the code, and come back to us in a year's time as they complete their full review of the charter um, with some recommendations. Obviously, we know that the code, as it pertains to civil emergencies, has not been changed. Uh, also, our, um, ability to adopt emergency ordinances, they're all, they're both a little, both the charter and the code don't quite, don't quite line up with modern times and could use a really full review. So I would hesitate to, um, piecemeal this and throw out an arbitrary number of forty-five days and give a real solid review. And I think the Charter Review Commission is a good place to start with that. So that's, that's my thoughts on this bill. Um, I think the bill as drafted is duplicative. We already have the, the authority within the, the county code currently to do what this bill is asking us to codify. So, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I understand, um, Councilwoman, what you are sharing and what you are suggesting. I would just say that it, it would be a bit challenging for any other body to review what has taken place in the past eleven months, especially since there are hours of meetings in a work group, um, for COVID recovery that were never made public. Um, and I, as one of the council members who served on that work group, think that it is imperative that we update this section of the code as council members who have lived through the longest civil emergency in county history.
Any other comments before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on bill number nine twenty-one. Madam Secretary, have we received any written testimony from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received two submissions of written or typed testimony for bill number nine twenty-one. The entire council received copies and this has been added to the bill file.
Thank you. We will now hear from any members of the public who have signed up ahead of time to speak on this bill. We have one individual signed up. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When I call on you, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Paul Arcand.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, Paul Arcand, seven oh one Conover Lane, Pasadena, Maryland. And, uh, first just want to thank all of the council members for your, your service to our county. And, uh, I do pray for each of you regularly, as, um, my congregation represents a- all of your districts. And so I do appreciate you and pray for each of you. Uh, I, I'm just to, want to speak in support of this, uh, nine twenty-one. And, uh, I think it's a common sense bill. I, I, I think that, uh, Councilwoman Fiedler is just thinking ahead. I think the, um, uh, constituents and residents are, like, boy, do we need to do something. Um, we understand the county executive needs, uh, a seamless authority, but maybe not an endless. And I think if you pass the bill, it'll take out some of the partisanship about it, that where we don't have to feel loyal to the particular executive and try to work that through. Not that I think any of you are in lockstep just because I think you represent your districts, but I, I think it's a good bill. And, um, and I like the idea of what, uh, Councilwoman Picker just said, that, ma- review it all, uh, down the road. But I think if you did this, it would really help, uh, the community to kind of feel like, okay, w- we're not going to do these things forever, because there'll be a different executive in the future. And I think this would be a good step, forty-five days reviewing. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on bill number nine twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number nine twenty-one.
Bill number nine twenty-one, an ordinance concerning civil emergencies duration.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I just want to reiterate, because I, I had a discussion with someone over the weekend about this and they seemed confused by it. So I appreciate that Mr. Barron said and Councilwoman Pickard acknowledged that this council at any point could end the state of emergency. It's entirely within our authority. I think there's a lot of people who are confused by that, think that somehow we don't have that authority. So I just want to make sure that's clear for anybody watching at home and if the newspaper's covering this, hopefully they get that too. Um, just want to make sure that's clear. The second point I want to make is this, uh, Councilwoman Pickard's idea sounds interesting to kind of review all of this holistically, right? But this isn't something that's in the charter. This is in the code. So to be clear, this bill is going to change the county code, not the county charter. So the Charter Revision Commission looks at our county charter once every ten years after the decennial census and decides if there are things in our charter that need to be changed. But the basis of this authority comes out of section one dash six dash one zero four of the county code. Uh, so while certainly we could look at whether it's appropriate to put something like this in the charter or not, that's not the purpose of the Charter Revision Commission. And frankly, um, it, it's, it's sort of apples and oranges in terms of looking at when it's appropriate to review this. This is certainly something that's appropriate for the county council to take a look at now. Uh, because just like any other bill, as a code change, this requires four votes of the council. That's it. Uh, unlike a charter change, which would require five, and that's why we only do it infrequently and with a super majority. So I just want to clarify that, because I think that idea sounds good, um, but I, I think that it sort of misses the mark on what we're actually doing here. Thanks.
Madam Secretary, we do have an amendment. Would you please read amendment number one?
Amendment number one. This amendment clarifies that bill number nine twenty-one will not apply to the current civil emergency authorized and extended by bill number twenty-four twenty, but will apply to all civil emergencies declared in the county in the future.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey, so moved.
A second?
Fiedler, a second?
Is there, uh, was, should, before I begin discussion, of course, I think Mr. Volkey and Ms. Fiedler are the sponsors of this amendment, so Mr. Volkey, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Yes, um, I am the sponsor along with Councilwoman Fiedler of this amendment. The intent behind the amendment is relatively simple. There were a number of my colleagues who at the work session expressed concern that this bill was somehow a backdoor attempt to end the state of emergency that currently exists in the county, uh, as Councilwoman Fiedler made clear at the work session and as this amendment would make abundantly clear, uh, this would effectively exempt the current state of emergency from this legislation. Therefore, this legislation would be, as it always was intended to be, uh, prospective only in nature. It would not be retroactive and it would have no, uh, effect on the current state of emergency that's in effect in the county right now. So to clarify that and, and take away any concerns or reservations that folks may have about voting for this bill, uh, the resolution is, or the, um, amendment, excuse me, is being proposed to this bill to ensure that there is no sense, uh, that there's, you know, bad faith or that something underhanded is happening. This is an entirely prospective bill and that's the purpose.
Ms. Fiedler, would you like to add anything before I ask the administration for its response?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I, um, concur with Councilman Volkey. Um, the intent really of, of the bill was to be forward-thinking and upon discussion at our work session, there were some concerns over the language, so I do support this amendment. Um, I've heard overwhelmingly from constituents and residents all across the county, um, not just on specific executive orders and measures taken, but how do we prevent something like this from happening again? So, uh, again, it's very forward-thinking, um, and I appreciate the, uh, work on the amendment.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Uh, this amendment definitely makes the bill better, but does not change the administration's overall opposition.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The amendment to bill number nine twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you. Um, bill number nine twenty-one, as amended, will be heard on March first, twenty twenty-one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number sixteen twenty-one.
Resolution number sixteen twenty-one, resolution approving the use of Clifton Larson Allen LLP, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Uh, I'm going to call on Madam Auditor to please, uh, describe the, explain the need for this resolution. Thanks.
This is a cleanup for fiscal year twenty. Um, the evaluation committee did get together and were initially going to go out to RFP for the fiscal year twenty audit, but after discussion with purchasing and finance, um, it didn't seem like it would be feasible to get the procurement done within the six months, um, as originally planned. And so, um, the evaluation committee decided to go ahead and renew our contract for Clifton Larson for fiscal year twenty and um, we have gone out to bid for fiscal year twenty-one and that'll be coming in a later resolution. But this one is to approve the, um, Clifton Larson as the fis- for the fiscal year twenty audit.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? None? Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number sixteen twenty-one.
Resolution number sixteen twenty-one, resolution approving the use of Clifton Larson Allen LLP, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Is there any further discussion to make this possibly not the shortest meeting in our council's history? Apparently not. Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number sixteen twenty-one.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number sixteen twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Mr. Volkey?
Motion to adjourn.
I didn't have my gavel yet. Hang on. Okay. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until six PM on Monday, March first, twenty twenty-one.